Well, 6:00 PM, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022, formal meeting at the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. In attendance for commissioners tonight are Martin, Padron, Hench, Townsend, and Craig via telephone. First item on the agenda is public discussion of any item not on the agenda. If there's any member of the public who'd like to address the commission, now is your opportunity. I cannot speak, so that doesn't help either. Anyone like to address the commission? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll go on to item number four. Item number four, case number VAC21-0001, location 829 Kirkwood Avenue. This is an application for a vacation of public right-of-way. Ann?
Thank you, Chair. Ann Russett with Neighborhood Development Services.
Ann, do I need to step away now? Or can I hear the Sarah?
It's probably best if you-
I think you need to come away from the diaries, but-
Okay, perfect, so-
Just note-
Phoebe Martin is recusing herself from the vote.
Thank you. As the Chair mentioned, this is a vacation of public right-of-way. Here's an aerial map of the property, and the proposed vacation is highlighted here in the white dashed line. Here is the zoning map. This property is zoned RS5. It's actually a local historic landmark as well. So you can see the property is split by the right-of-way that exists, what looks like their property but is actually public right-of-way. The alley was platted in the Lucas Edition in 1857. The alley was never improved. Back in 2008, the city received an application for a vacation, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of that vacation. However, it was deferred indefinitely when it went to council, and so that approval was never granted. The city received a new application requesting the vacation of this public right-of-way last year because the property owner is interested in building a garage behind their home. In terms of reviewing vacations, there are six criteria that we look at, and I will go through each one of those individually. The first is the impact on pedestrian and vehicular access and circulation. The right-of-way is not currently used for vehicular or pedestrian circulation or access to any property, and the vacation of the right-of-way will not affect vehicular or pedestrian circulation in any way. The next criteria is impact on emergency and utility vehicle access and circulation, and the right-of-way is not accessed by emergency or utility vehicles either. The third criteria is related to the impact on access of adjacent private properties. As I mentioned, the alley is unimproved, and so the vacation will not impact access of adjacent private properties. There's a north-south alley between Kirkwood Avenue and Florence Street which provides access to all the adjacent private properties, which you can kind of see here on the right of the screen. So that existing north-south alley will be maintained. The next criteria is the desirability of right-of-way for access or circulation needs, and staff has determined that there is no need to maintain the right-of-way for access or circulation. Next is the location of utilities and other easements or restrictions on the property. The right-of-way does not contain any city utilities. Private utilities have been contacted and asked to identify any utilities that are currently on-site. If the right-of-way is vacated, easements will need to be granted for any utilities that may exist, or alternatively, those utilities would need to be vacated or relocated. Lastly, if there's any other relevant factors pertaining to the specific request, and there are none that staff has identified. So in summary, staff does recommend the vacation of this alley contingent upon the retention of any necessary utility easements. The right-of-way was never built, and the vacation will not affect traffic, emergency or utility service access, or adjacent private properties. In terms of next steps, upon the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, the proposed vacation will be reviewed by City Council, and the City Council will also discuss the conveyance of the land to the applicant. Staff recommends approval of VAC21-0001, a vacation of the public right-of-way adjacent to 829 Kirkwood Avenue, subject to the retention of any necessary utility easements. And that concludes my presentation.
Do any members of the commission have a question of Ann regarding this vacation?
I guess I'm just curious why City Council didn't approve it last time.
Because the applicant actually requested that it be deferred indefinitely, and they never brought it back.
Okay.
Can you show where that is?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Susan.
This is Susan. I just want to make sure I have the process right in my mind, because this is the first one of these I've ever done. So there is payment, correct, from the applicant to the city, but that is done by the City Council, not by us?
That's correct.
Okay.
Could you show where the north-south alley is? I drive by there every day, and I didn't even know there was any alley. So that's the east-west one illustrated there.
I wish you could see my cursor.
It doesn't go all the way through to Kirkwood, does it? It goes all the way through?
You see the boundary of the property in black. East of that black line is that north-south alley.
Okay. Maria, do you have any questions?
No, no. Well, I have one question. If there are any utilities that have to be moved, will the city have to pay for that?
No.
Will that the owner?
Probably that's something the utility company has to work out with the property owner.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, the conveyance would be subject to those easements, since they're already existing, but I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, we did reach out to private utility companies and got no response on any concerns.
Okay.
So private utilities, would that be like cable? That's okay. Any other questions? Susan, anything else?
No, thank you.
All right. So now we'll open the public hearing. If there's anybody in the crowd, this is your opportunity to speak to the commission. We'll start with applicant or the applicant's representative if they'd like to address the commission on this application. And you don't have to. You know, if there's nothing you want to add, then that's just fine. Just want to make sure you have the opportunity if you'd like.
I just-
Please come up then.
And the only thing I would clarify is that we are not the original applicants for the vacation.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Brad Paulson, property owner with my wife of 829 Kirkwood Avenue.
All right. Anything else, Brad?
I think that's it.
All right. Thank you very kindly. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the commission? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion on this application.
So moved.
Motion by Townsend, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Padron. Discussion? I can't see a single reason not to approve this. It's never been used as an alley. It's really interesting, and you go back to the original plating, and you see these alleys all throughout the city, and so it seems like this is a good idea to get this cleaned up, so I'll-
And they've never done anything with it. It's just-
Yeah, just out there. Any other discussion?
No, I don't have any comments.
Susan, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of approving this application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved, order zero. Next item on the agenda, consideration of a memo to the City Manager regarding state legislation. Ann?
Thank you, Chair. This is a memo that-
For the record, that Commissioner Martin is back in her seat.
Hi again.
So based on the discussion that occurred at the last meeting, there was interest from the commission in writing a letter stating your concerns regarding the Governor's Workforce Housing Bill, specifically Division 1 of that bill. So I prepared a draft memo for the commission to review. So now is your opportunity to make any edits or changes or discuss the memo as I've drafted
Any comments or questions from any member of the commission?
It seems that this legislation might be amended or removed, so things appear to be moving in the positive direction, but, you know, the lobbyists are still advocating for that. Until it happens, we can't, you know.
I feel it's important that this letter be drafted and submitted to the City Council or the City Manager. Looks like it's to the City Manager, because a lot of really bad legislation can go through if people don't speak up, and I think this is a really bad idea. I don't even really know what it means. I think it's so vague, the way they worded this, so that's just my thought. Any Maria?
Well, no, I like the letter. The only thing is that we're not asking the City Council for them to send a letter, right? We're not asking for any action on them.
My understanding is it'll be used for the City Council or City Manager to advocate to the lobbyists that the city retains to defeat the legislation from advancing in the legislature.
Okay. I appreciate that you did that.
It looks good to me.
Susan, do you have any questions or comments on the draft letter, draft memorandum?
No, I'm glad we're doing it, and I guess I do have a question, and maybe Ann or the attorney can help, and maybe there's just no help for it, which is, I still have no clue what that means, that sentence. Except that it's, I just, it's just, under this section, if forfeits of the lots and the land area covered by the ordinance, do not conform with the ordinance. What does that mean?
I don't know.
Okay. That was the answer last time, and it's just, okay.
Yeah, I think it's important to anybody that's watching this to know that the LSA drafts these on a request from an individual legislator or committee or subcommittee chair, and a lot of times, the drafting is not very good. It's really gone downhill in this legislative session and even the last legislative session, so there must have been a lot of changeover at the LSA Legislative Services Agency Administration?
Yes, but-
Whatever A stands for.
Because it's still alive in the legislature, I mean, the language could be made worse, it could be clarified so you know just how bad it is, but it's not good either way.
I concur.
And as Sarah said, and this is what we heard from staff today, is that there's been a lot of talk at the Capitol about removing the language entirely. That hasn't happened yet, but it sounds like the conversations are going in a good direction.
But as we all know, you have no idea what's going to happen until they vote. So if it made it through the first funnel, so if it makes it through the second funnel, it gets scarier and scarier. So any other discussion on this memorandum? If no, is there any opposition of any member of the commission for this to be forwarded to the City Manager with our recommendation?
I think it's okay.
Susan, any reticence?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So do you want a formal vote, or just head nods is good enough?
I think head nods are fine.
All right. So we have five affirmative head nods to proceed.
We're all nodding.
We're all nodding. And there's one-
Except Susan.
Virtual head nod with Susan. Susan, will you nod your head so you don't make me a liar?
I'm nodding my head.
Thank you kindly.
I'm nodding my head. I raised my flint in agreement.
All right. Item number six, presentation on approved rezoning and subdivision applications. Ann?
Okay. Just sorry, just one last thing on that item. I do have a copy here, Mike, if you could sign it after the meeting, and I'll get it to the City Manager tomorrow.
Will do.
So with this one, I would caution you to not engage in discussion about the substance of various applications, since there wasn't really notice that specific applications were going to be discussed. This is just for you giving us information? Just information. Right. I mean, if you have questions for Ann, I think that's fine, but I think we should get into-
Everybody bite down very hard on their tongues.
Yes.
We're all ears.
Okay. So this was a request from Commissioner Townsend about just getting a status update on where some of the approved rezoning and subdivision applications stand. So most of these are projects that are not moving forward. Some have moved forward partially, so I'm just going to go through these pretty quickly. I'm going to start back in 2017 with the rezoning of The Grove, as it's referred to. It's along Camp Cardinal Boulevard and Deer Creek Road. This was a planned development overlay rezoning. It was rezoning to OPD RM12. It was a proposal for three multifamily buildings around 112 dwelling units. There was also a conditional zoning agreement with this, and the status at this point is that staff has not received a site plan application, and the OPD plan has expired. Similar to preliminary plats, OPD plans expire after 24 months if they're not moved forward. And here's just a visual of the approved OPD plan and then the renderings for the project.
Ann, can I ask a question? Sorry, couldn't be quiet. When the, so the OPD plan has expired, this could be anything, does it cost money for an applicant to make those OPD plans with the city? Like, would someone have to pay again if they wanted to reopen this? How does that process work?
Yeah, you know, we, since I've been here, we haven't had that happen, but they would need to submit, in most cases, a new rezoning application, and they would need to prepare all the materials for a rezoning application. They could theoretically reapply for what was already approved, so it might not cost a lot of money, but I would think that there would be some expenses involved.
And it doesn't cost the applicant money to the city directly to open the process again?
They would need to, the application, there's an application fee that-
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the rezoning is based on the fact that we, that it was approved with this concept? So if the concept is not moving forward, the land is not rezoned, or it is rezoned?
It is still rezoned, but the actual plan that was approved as part of the rezoning is no longer valid. So for example, with this OPD plan, they had requested a height increase that was part of that OPD plan, so that for, they couldn't, they couldn't get that height increase without going back through the process again.
Got it, thank you.
The next is a rezoning on Prey Deshene Road, just south of I-80. This was a rezoning to RM12, and they proposed a 24-unit complex. If you remember, this was a former manufactured housing park, and since that rezoning went through, we have not received any applications for a site plan. Here's the concepts, though, that they submitted with that application. They aren't tied to the rezoning at all, but these were just kind of generally what they were thinking about doing with the site.
Do you know if those people are gone?
They're gone. It's cleared.
Is it? I haven't been by in a long time.
I think there's one unit still on that lot, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Is that, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. The next one is Forest View, which is near the intersection of I-80 and North Dubuque Street. This included a comprehensive plan amendment, a rezoning to an OPD RS12 and OPD CH1. There was also a preliminary plat application that was submitted as well. The comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning were approved. The subdivision did not move forward, so that was never approved, but similar to The Grove, that OPD plan has expired as well. And here's just some, this is the image on the left here is the comprehensive plan amendment, what it looked like in terms of the land uses, and then on the right, the land use summary. And then here's the OPD plan which was approved. Next is 12 East Court. This was a rezoning of around 3.5 acres. This is where the Pennacres Gardens apartments are located, and this was rezoned to Riverfront Crossings South Downtown. They went through the rezoning process, and then the applicant submitted an application for design review and a bonus height request. Both of those were approved for two, for two 15-story buildings with ground floor commercial and around 918 dwelling units. Since that, since City Council approved that bonus height, we have not received any applications for a site plan. And here's a rendering and some elevations for what is proposed.
Was this the one with the artwork?
They did incorporate some kind of light displays and artwork along the first-floor commercial facades, yeah. Orchard Court. This was another Riverfront Crossings rezoning in 2018, and it was a rezoning to Riverfront Crossings Orchard District, and the intended development was two multifamily buildings, three stories each, around 125 units. There was also a vacation of public right-of-way that was part of that. And since that rezoning has gone through, we have not received any design review or site plan applications. Here are the concepts that were submitted with the rezoning application. You can see the two, three-story buildings, and then that green area between them is a pedestrian walkway. Next is 4643 Herbert Hoover Highway Southeast. This was a rezoning in 2018, followed by a preliminary and final plat, all of which were approved. The applicant is an affordable housing developer, and they had planned on developing two affordable housing projects. Currently, they have one of those built. It's a 36-unit affordable family development, and they are working to secure funding for a 52-unit senior housing project. So here's a couple pictures of the affordable family housing project that's been built. And they, and here's a picture of their, the building from the back with the bicycle parking, the playground, and a bench there. And here's the concept. So the building on the left is built, and the building on the right is what they hope to build for seniors after they secure more funding. Rollins Pass. This was a preliminary plat. This was actually the first application that I presented to the commission, so I remember it well. It went through, the preliminary plat was approved, and preliminary plats expire after 24 months if you don't move forward with the final plat application. They were not ready to move forward with the final plat application, so they requested a 24-month extension of that preliminary plat, which was approved by council, and so that extension expires next year. And so at this point, their preliminary plat extension was approved, but we have not received a final plat application yet at this point. And here's just a couple images of the preliminary plat. They are proposing some townhomes on the northeast corner of the site, and then some single-family surrounding it. The rezoning on East Prentice Street and Riverfront Crossings was approved in 2019. There was also a text amendment that was approved as part of that. The rezonings were approved, and they also submitted an application for Riverfront Crossings Design Review. Those plans were approved, and City Council approved their request for a bonus height up to have an eight-story building. And after the design review was approved and the bonus height was approved, that particular developer decided not to move forward with the project. We have since received interest from another developer who has submitted a design review applications for this site, and actually, staff design review just approved those plans today, and that is for actually a seven-story building. So one floor of parking was removed. So instead of eight stories, it'll be seven stories and around 192 units, and here's a couple of renderings of that building. The Harding Events Center was a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning that was approved in 2000, and since that was approved, we have not received any site plan applications. Here's the, here's the elevations and the plan for that property to do Event, Event Center. That's out on Camp Cardinal Road.
There was a vacation and conveyance associated with that one, too, and the applicant has not paid the compensation due to close on the purchase of that right-of-way, so the vacation has been complete, but the conveyance has not been complete yet.
The rezoning on Riverside and Myrtle, also in 2000 or 2001, there was a comprehensive plan amendment as well as a text amendment associated with this project. All of those were approved by City Council, and to date, we have not received any design review plans or site plans for the property. These are the concepts that were submitted with their rezoning application, though. 400 North Clinton Street and 112 East Davenport Street. This was a rezoning to the PRM zone from RM44 to PRM. There was also a text amendment associated with this to allow some more zoning flexibility in the PRM zone related to preservation of historic resources. The intended development is around 32 units and five stories. Coinciding with that, those applications was a rezoning of 410-412 North Clinton Street just to the north, and that rezoning was to make that property a local historic landmark, so to protect that building in perpetuity. And we haven't received any applications for design review for this site yet, but here's the concept that was submitted for the redevelopment of this site, 400 North Clinton and 112 East Davenport, in exchange for protecting the 410-412 property. There was a more recent rezoning that is probably familiar to all the commissioners, the block of 700 South Dubuque Street. This one actually is moving forward. The rezoning was to Riverfront Crossing, Central Crossings. They were proposing a six-story residential apartment building. There was also a vacation of public right-of-way. We have reviewed the design review plans, and a height bonus was approved for 250 units and six stories. The building plans are currently being reviewed by staff, and here's just a couple renderings of that building as well. And that's my, that's my final one, so happy to answer any questions.
I really appreciate you putting that presentation together. That was very helpful to me, because you just sort of lose track of them after a while. So is there a common theme? And I know you don't know the reasons why people aren't moving forward, so I guess it's just hypothesizing. Is this about the number you'd expect? Does this seem high for people not moving forward, and reasons why you think? Is there anything we can do?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. My sense is that some of it has to do with the pandemic, if not a lot of it. I've heard that construction costs have gone up a lot, and so maybe that's one of the reasons we're not seeing as much development.
Yeah, I think that's true. We did some bids, did the bid tally this morning of a project that the architect's estimate was $900,000, and the lowest bid came in at 1.65. So I think that is a true phenomenon. Anybody else have questions?
And of course, I'm always concerned about the affordable housing piece, and that Forest View is just, what happens with that now? Nothing?
At this point, I don't know.
Okay. Because at one point, they were talking about bidding larger units, and we didn't hear any more about that, and-
Mm-hmm. I mean, at this point, the conditional zoning is still in effect. Before they can proceed, they'll either have to satisfy the conditions that were stated therein, or you guys will be presented with a new zoning application, so.
My heart goes out to those people that live, if you've been driven by there, those units are just, I don't see how they can live in them. They're horrible.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go on to item number seven, consideration of meeting minutes for February 16, 2022. Are there any major additions or corrections anybody would like to note?
I just have one comment on, well, what's, on my list is page- I just have one comment on, well, what's, on my list is page three, where it said Townsend asked Bulk to talk a little bit about the traffic, and I think that may have been Susan that said that. Is that right, Susan?
It talked about what?
Where it says Townsend asked Bulk to talk a little bit about traffic, as that was a concern in previous discussions.
Yes, that was me.
That was you, so.
Yes.
I didn't think that came from me.
Any other additions or corrections? If not, could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Townsend, second by who seconded it? BB? Second by Martin. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved, five to zero. Item number eight, planning and zoning information. Ann?
The one update I have is that City Council approved the Hickory Trail Estates preliminary plat at their meeting on Tuesday.
Excellent, excellent. Oh, one comment I have. Formerly, we had two Commissioners with perfect attendance, Mr. Sines and Ms. Townsend. Now we're just down to one. Thirteen meetings in a row.
I won.
So you won, actually. Now you gotta see how long you can keep the streak alive. So sorry, Mark, you're out of the running.
And I'll be gone for the next meeting.
Oh, if we have one.
Santa Fe, here I come.
All right. So Commissioner Martin will be absent from the next meeting if it is held as scheduled. All right, have a great time. All right. Any further P and Z information discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by Martin. Motion by Martin, second by Craig?
Yes.
All right. Discussion.
None.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Oh, I was an aye. Hearing no nays, motion for adjournment is approved, five to zero. Thank you, everybody.